Thank you. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattenburg.
Present.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Present.
Councilman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Gonzalez.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, Minister of Public Plurk is present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Cologie. And in for West Bridges is Palmer Richardson, City Attorney. And Madam President, at this time, I'll read the invocation.
Yes, please.
Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and their greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Madam President, as my understanding of the presentation this evening for Brunswick Avenue redevelopment update.
Yes, I believe Councilwoman Williams asked for them to come to be present with us today to give us an update?
Yes, Council President, thank you so much. I asked for this several months ago, 2024, as we're nearing the second anniversary this coming March of granting a pilot. And there were many things that were promised. If this pilot was granted, as was even reported in the Trentonian, including a laundry room, an after-school program, computer lab, joint services with the local hospital, social services, a new security system with lights and monitors cameras, as well as interior and exterior improvements to the apartments at this location, which is on Brunswick Avenue, just as you, near Capital Health Regional. So I thought it would be good, because I did get plenty of complaints from my constituents living in this development, that they haven't seen any improvements. And some of these, I would have thought, coming on 24 months, would have been completed by now. So I'd wanted to hear, and I wanted us to hear as a council and the public, where these improvements stand and what's going on for the pilot that was granted. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Do we have a representative? Director Liston?
There was a gentleman from the company who was scheduled to be here at 5:30. He's not present. I can give you secondhand information in discussing it with the principal of the company, who is actually in Rome and couldn't make it tonight. But they have really not engaged any real repairs to the building. What they're advising is that they are going in front of HMFA in February for their funding, for the next funding cycle. And they really won't be doing any construction or any improvements until February, after February, and after they bid the project would probably put it into spring sometime. So they really have not followed up like they should. And I will tell you, when I made contact and spoke with a few different people, they had kind of were just sitting on things, waiting for the February HMFA meeting. So I don't see, I don't see anyone here from the company, which they were emailing, not copying you on the fact that they were supposed to be here. And they have not presented themselves. If you would like, I will follow up in the morning and contact them and make sure they're, or try to make sure that they're at the next meeting. I think it's only fair for somebody from the company to make themselves present. And if somebody shows up tonight, I'll let you, I'll let the council president know.
If that's amenable to the council president, I would very much like that, sir. And any information you could provide to us in between, that would be wonderful, because if they're waiting to have a funding round from NJMHFA for some of these things that were promised, to me, that's very regretful.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, I know at this time we had a walk-on. Ms. Garcia?
Yes, Madam President, we do have a walk-on resolution. And it's my understanding that there are some remarks to be heard prior to that resolution.
Right.
Second.
Huh? Certainly.
Council members, there was a walk-on in order, it should be on today. About appointing Director Liston as the official director.
Yes, copies were made available for council for that item, you should have that with you. And that'll be Resolution 24-12.
Council President, do we have a, do we have a number for this walk-on? He just said, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, that, once again, that'll be Resolution 24-12, I mean, excuse me, 25, 25-12, my apologies. Bad reflex.
I believe we were just waiting, give it a minute, for Mayor Gussior to come forward, which it looks like he's walking down the hallway now.
Yeah, I believe the Chief of Staff just went to get him.
Mayor Gussior, if you would like to come forward.
Thank you, Council President, sorry for my tardiness, I was dealing with another issue. Thank you for considering the walk-on nomination of Arch Liston as our HED Director. I think it's important to note that we did screen candidates. We also consulted with DCA at each point. And in fact, DCA representatives were here today to discuss the qualifications, as well as speak with Arch directly. The reason why Arch is the strongest candidate was that there was a backlog of permit applications. And he reestablished a clear process for developers to obtain permits in a timely manner. That was not being done until Arch came here. He also addressed the large accumulation of planning and zoning board applications that have been built up over time. And I note that distinguished Councilwoman Jen Williams is here, and she could attest of the great backlog that was both in planning and zoning board. That has been addressed by Arch since he took over. But what is really important was, one of the questions that we asked was, what was the biggest development opportunity in the city? And he said without a doubt, Roebling Block 2, the seven-acre tract of land that's in the East and South Ward, and possibly part of the North Ward now. That is a big opportunity for Trenton to be revitalized, to bring in jobs, and to bring new housing and mixed use. And it's, it's one of his, it is his priority to get that done. It will be exciting to see in our lifetime and to this council's tenure that Roebling Block 2 will finally see development opportunities. He's also received a a substantial offer for track of land on Enterprise Avenue that we're discussing right now with the redeveloper. And so we're going to see development on Enterprise Avenue. The other architect that Arch has is with the hotel and working with both EDA, Greater Trenton, and, and potential developers to take over the hotel. And that, again, will also bring fresh life and blood into our downtown businesses. Arch is also working with HMFA to straighten out the log jam of getting reimbursed for demolitions. So there's a lot of pokes in the fire, so to speak. And we think that Arch has the insight, the capability and the experience to move our, our city forward, particularly in housing economic development. And just today, I know that Vanessa Sullivan's house is always on the top of our mind. We went there and we've been able to break that log jam, and we hope to see her house finished by February. So we're excited about all the things and just the streamlining of processes, but moving the department forward so that Trenton can move forward in economic development. So respectfully, we submit Arch's nomination. And I hope that you'll find it to confirm him as well. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any council members that would like to ask any questions at this time?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor, just because I know members of the public will ask, how did you receive other applications? And roughly, could you tell us how many?
Refer to our Chief of Staff, we had received four. And we weighed them, screened them by DCA, and had interviews.
Okay, and then as part of, you know, the future, and these are very exciting projects that could potentially happen for us. As far as also the backlog of houses to be demolished beyond the initial number that we've approved funding for a few months ago, what is the plan for HED going through the rest of 2025, hopefully?
The big challenge is we ran out of money. So what is, what HMFA does indeed have a little less than nine million to help us with demolition, that's a reimbursement program. So we have to have that initial outlay to conduct demolitions. We can't just demolish overnight tomorrow. If it's an imminent hazard and it's about to fall down, we absolutely have to do it. But that puts us in a pickle. Notwithstanding, in order for HMFA to reimburse us, they have a very elaborate, and I would actually describe as overly elaborate bureaucratic requirements that do not enable us to move forward because it's a reimbursement fund. So Arch is freeing up monies, coming up with a plan, met with HMFA officials, and came out with a game plan to move the program, to jumpstart the program again. But we do not have money for demolitions. We're using some CDVG money. We're doing some, using some other funding to get that initial outlay. But unless we have that, HMFA will not. And the other thing is, I'll give you an example. There were four or five houses that burned down on Die Street, right across from HMFA. They would not reimburse us for the demolition, because even though it was a fire, we didn't seek preapproval. So we have to be like Karmak and know that those houses were going to burn, and then see if HMFA would reimburse us. We think that's unreasonable, but we're glad that Arch is here to help us break that log jam.
Well, I certainly hope he does, because that seems patently unfair.
I said, I said to the people of HMFA, look out your window. And you can verify that those houses burnt down and they had to be demolished because they were imminent hazards. But they didn't have, we didn't have preapproval for that.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am, thank you, ma'am.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattenburg.
Hey, Mayor, thank you. Quick question, just to kind of address the elephant in the room, public is watching. There's been newspaper articles, social media exploitation. We know that there's pending litigation, there's been allegations with regards to Mr. Liston. How is that being handled moving forward and moving him into this position?
Well, they were investigated and, by an independent agency, so to speak, where they were investigated and we had witnesses to the incident. And we believe that Arch, at the end of the day, is, is, is okay and that those allegations are not substantiated.
Is there anything still outstanding or pending?
Not that I know of, but I don't know if the law department wants to weigh in.
Not to my knowledge, we can check.
Okay.
Yeah, so at this time, not to my knowledge, there was, as the mayor indicated, an investigation that we sent to outside council. I can confirm if it's completed, but I believe it has been. However, at this point, I don't believe there's anything else outstanding.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Mayor, this is not necessarily about, about Arch, I mean, I get what we're doing here. I just want to know the status of Paul Harris, as well as Diego Manicapalli, only because they're still on the 90-day as well. And so while it's nice to see Arch up here, what about those two who have been working very hard and diligently in their positions as well?
Thank you for that excellent question, Councilwoman Feliciano. Now, I know there's a representative of DCA in here and taking copious notes, but they require us to screen and have them involved. So we can't do it all at once. And it's our desire to move forward with those nominations expeditiously. We hope that another director will be on for next council meeting.
That'll be good, they're working very hard, so.
But thank you for that question, because we don't want to leave anybody hanging or to think that we're not moving on them.
That's right, okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Harrison.
Mayor, a question for you regarding the Capital Health East, the old St. Francis.
Yes.
What's the timeline, have we had a meeting, are we going to set a meeting up with them? As the community wants to know, what's the plan for the future?
Yeah, I've been in contact with Dan Mowen, the a former executive of St. Francis, now Trinity Health. It was their original intention to give the property to, to the city of Trenton. And after they demolished the property. In the meantime, the emergency services were still operating, albeit by Capital Health. And Capital Health came up with a proposal, we can't really shut down the emergency services. Also, we would need approval from the Department of Health. And so they wanted to continue to operate there until they could either expand their services at Hleanfold, or ideally, they would like to keep emergency services over at St. Francis site itself. So their proposal was, St. Francis, give us the money, or we will, we will purchase the property. We'll redevelop it, but we'll be able to do it while keeping emergency services continuing. Those discussions have not been finalized, but that's generally the framework that, instead of the city of Trenton assuming responsibility. And I'm sure you guys don't want any more real estate on our hands that we have to dispose of. It is better if there is a purchaser, so to speak. Capital Health seems to be a good partner, that they will continue emergency services. And I know that's important to the East Ward. And build around it to, to have a medical arts community, a mixed use, so to speak, and have some apartments there as well.
So we're going to be working in the near future on setting up that meeting, because it's been about six months since Capital Health took over just the ER. We have the parking garage and others that can come down. So you're right, correct.
But I've spoken with Mr. Mowen within the last couple of weeks, and then because of the holidays, it broke off. But it's a fair question, we should touch base with Capital Health to see if they're still on board, and to see that Trinity is still on board with that plan.
What about the Cook School? Do you have any idea what's going on with?
Cook School is an excellent question as well, because that seemed to be something that we try to do beginning. I don't know if Arch has any updates on that? No, but please send me an email and I'll get you that. I know it was purchased, we sold it. And there was a promise of redevelopment, we just need to make sure that they're following through as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Any questions? I have one quick question, I know Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattenburg just brought it up, but just to be clear, Director Richardson, Palmer, the investigation has been concluded. It has been closed out on, in terms of Liston.
I'm sorry, Council President, so just to be clear, I can't fully say that it's been concluded. It's been sent out to outside council. I would have to check to confirm that they were all done.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Is, so Director Bridges would know the answer to this question. And I know that he had sent something, I don't, can you follow up your email? For West, I saw it, he had sent something that, that pertained to this, or that there was an investigation, and that it was concluded. I mean, Mayor, can you call him on the phone?
Yeah, I think it'd be more appropriate if.
Or can Palmer call Director?
His special assistant.
Call Director Bridges on the line?
Absolutely.
Council President, is that okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Harrison?
While we're waiting, you were talking about the hotel, can you give us a little more update on what you were talking about, the hotel?
Yes, the hotel was sold upward originally around 10 million or thereof. And unfortunately, that group did not work out, and a receiver took over the hotel. They have been, for the last couple of years, trying to look at recovering that price that, that that the hotel sold for. I had indicated that I didn't think that that hotel was worth that much, anywhere near that. And that seemed to be the stickler for moving forward. In the meantime, there is a Economic Development Authority grant, where it's called the Local Acquisition Fund, and that they will give, and Trenton received the highest amount, $4 million. And that gives us an ability to purchase the hotel. And we believe that that's the best deal that the receiver is going to receive. If he, if somebody can come along and exceed that, we'll be pleased as punch. But what we intend to do is purchase the hotel. We believe that there was an indication that that figure was acceptable. And what we would do is we would flip it, so to speak, can't be any more clear than that. We don't intend to keep it more than a week. What we want to do is find someone who comes in. And what's, what's been stopping purchasers is they have to purchase the hotel and renovate it. Now, if we essentially give the hotel away for the proverbial dollar, and I don't know if that's the amount or not, that's up to Arch, the money can well be spent in renovations and not purchasing the price. And it, it also protects the taxpayers. I know that it raised eyebrows, because the city had been in this, involved in this before, that we incurred, I think upwards of $60 million in debt. But that is not the case now. And we're still paying that off, believe it or not. I think there's a very de minimis amount that's still owed on the original bond. But what we intend to do is to sell it and, and have a developer concentrate on renovations and not having to worry about the purchase price.
So we have a developer in the mine, and we have one in the mine already?
There, there has been expresses interest, but there has, we did an RFP that is due January 15th. Arch would be able to tell you how many responses we got. But I know there's been a lot of expressed interest for it.
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. Mayor, since we have you up here, do you have any update on Clinton Manor on North Clinton Avenue? That, hopefully some goodness.
The old mayor's mansion, 70? Yes, if you drive past there right now, there's fencing around it. And they fully intend to start work, I think, as early as this spring to renovate the building and bring in market rate apartments that will be part of the transit village. But we're really excited, we met with the developer about two weeks ago. And we went over their plans, but they have moved forward with starting prep work. So we're really excited about seeing that, the old Clinton Apartments being done. That incidentally originated as the mayor's mansion in the late 1890s, but went into disrepair and then became an apartment building.
Well, I appreciate it being secured, because that was a specific request.
Or you could return it to the mayor's mansion.
Well, actually, we would love to have you in the North Ward, sir. If there's any information or presentation or graphics that we could be sent to see what's coming, that would be much appreciated.
Great, I think you should discuss that with the HED Director.
Okay, I will.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes, only because it was brought up in the hotel mayor. We're talking about the bond, the 60 million bond, when are we looking to have that satisfied? I believe that's coming.
I think that's imminent, I think there's less than a year left of payments. But I think. Maria or some, yeah, unfortunately. We would be able to get that exact figure and when it's expected to be paid off, but that's imminently.
And that would be great, here, 60 million. I know we, I know it's been talked, we've had the discussion before, but it would be nice to know that. I know, I believe we said that it was going to be this year, but to get more details would be really helpful.
Yeah, and that, and that, you know, you don't blame some people in the public saying, not that again. But it's, it's not that again, it's not 60 million, and the money is coming from the state.
Thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa-Cattenburg.
Thank you, since we're kind of buying time, Mayor. In the purview of HED and projects, just a, I just wanted to kind of bring it to your attention with regards to the old doll factory on Grand Street. I know that that is being revamped and renovated and rehabilitated for Foundation Academy. For over a month now, they have put up a barrier around the building, but they have put it in the street, kind of blocking street parking and blocking some of the roadway. Is there any way that they can, that can be requested to be moved further onto the sidewalk? I've gotten a lot of complaints from constituents with regard to that.
Yeah, let's work on that together, if you can email me, and I'm sure that Arch can discuss that with the construction crew. But yeah, just remind me, I've seen it firsthand as well.
Right.
Going down that street.
And then with that, and then with the construction starting soon on the old rectory, which is in a same vicinity, or like within a block apart, so it's going to cause a lot of fracture with parking and things while they're under rehabilitation, so that would be.
Yeah, and this is, this is the pains of revitalization. And these are all exciting projects, because that doll factory was a sore in, in the South Ward. And so it will be great to have, I, I think that's going to be a boon to that neighborhood and breathe some life.
Yeah, I've advocated for both, and I went to the planning meetings for the, for the Adeline Street project, the rectory. But yeah, it is an inconvenience to many in that neighborhood who have reached out several times. So just anything that we can do to try to make it less of an inconvenience during the transition would be great.
Yeah, and would even help the Blue Danube, the restaurant that's right around the corner. And I think that that will bring a lot more foot traffic to them, but I get it that, that they've taken parking away from even the Blue Danube customers.
Thank you.
Council President?
Before, I think Council Vice President had hers lit up first. And then Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I just had a few questions, or some things I just wanted to ask whether it's a priority. When you mentioned Roebling Block 2, I also want to bring attention to some other pockets around the city that are in severe state of dilapidation, or just abandoned and things like that, underutilized. So we have the Bellevue Avenue Hospital, we have Hermitage Plaza, we have the former dry cleaners that we recently demolished on Prospect Street, and the abandoned, like, strip of stores back there on Edgewood, Bruce Park, I think there's Bruce Park Drive back there.
Yep.
And, and of course Downtown drain, and we already mentioned St. Francis Hospital. But these things are very vital to the neighborhoods that they're in. And I was wondering, and you don't have to go through them. And I was wondering, uh, and you don't have to go through them one by one. I could definitely follow up with an email, um, later on. But I just would like for these things to be a priority. A lot of the residents complain about these specific areas. And I just wondered, um, if there are plans for all of these areas.
Yeah, um, and, and thank you for that question because that's the key to our, um, revitalization. And you can only imagine if all of those, uh, troublesome properties are taken care of, what that would mean to the city of Trenton. So they are a priority. The big, uh, challenge with, um, uh, the hos- the old hospital, the old Mercer Hospital. It's already purchased by a developer. Fair or not, had big plans and then COVID came and those plans went by the wayside. Um, we've had periodic, um, meetings with, uh, the developer. Um, is still eager to get the, the right funding and the partnership in place. Um, but that's still going to take time. And, um, I, I know it doesn't good, do any good for the neighborhood. Uh, but that's the problem when you get, um, uh, private ownership. I'll give you another example, the, um, the Y W C A on East Hanover. I put in a proposal to the old council, let us purchase that because we'll be in the driver's seat. We were said, no, they, they wouldn't do that. And, uh, a private developer bought the, the, uh, the Y W C A. Not only do you have little say in what's going to go there, but you have little say in, in the timeline because they own that property. Um, so the, the best we can do is request meetings and the like about moving it along. Um, we're due to ask the developer of, of Mercer Hospital, um, what's the latest? Um, but I, I think it's all funding issues internally. And, and again, that's the problem when you have, you don't put, um, uh, guidelines down when they purchase it of what timelines they have to meet. Um, it's his property and his property do with, does have to pay property taxes on it. And, um, just like the Y W C A has to pay property taxes. Um, but the best we can do is kind of push them along. Uh, the same thing with the, uh, strip on Edgewood Avenue. I, I travel there, uh, uh, many times, go cutting in, go to go back home and go right past it. And you just go, you just have a sigh when you, uh, see that property and, and its potential. There have been overtures about redeveloping it. And that's also something that we, um, we should do is, is contact that owner as well, uh, to see what the latest is about. And, and likewise for Hermitage Avenue as well. When they're city owned, we can be more aggressive and to look for, um, a developer. When they're privately owned, sometimes they just like to sit on it and wait for that golden day. Um, and that's why we have the vacant property registration and to make sure that they're paying that fee every year. Um, but, uh, Arch may have some strategies of, of having to tackle something when it's already in private ownership.
Thank you. Um, and I just want to say, um, you know, granted, he's approved to be the permanent director tonight. I would love to establish some type of monthly meetings with him and whoever is appropriate to be in there with the Economic Development Subcommittee of City Council to try to tackle some of these things. See where we can assist that, assist with as a governing body, uh, to help you move some stuff along with the administration.
As you may be aware, that was his concept to have council have a subcommittee. And I think that's important and, and you should keep his feet to his fire. And I don't think he, he needs it, but, um, I, I, I think he would welcome that, um, to, to update council on that. You are the redevelopment entity of the city. So you have every right to know what's going on, where, where we're going. And, uh, I think Arch would be the, the best for that. I think so far that he's received thumbs up when he does do a presentation before council because you get a comfort level that he knows what he's talking about and he's very familiar with the city. And he has a lot of old worldly knowledge, sorry, Arch, um, that he's been around the block. And, um, I, I've always been impressed of how much he knows about the planning, the zoning process to the point and landmark process for that matter, uh, to the point where he felt that there was such a backlog that that was one of his initial goals was to get that straightened out. And indeed, he has made really good progress on that.
Thank you, I concur.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Feliciano, you have something?
I was actually, thank you, Council President. I was just going to ask about Hermitage Avenue and the Edgewood Avenue, um, properties as well. So thank you.
Yeah, I remember when Ulabala was there, um, that restaurant, um, and it, it would be good to see that, uh, breed light, light into it again.
One last thing, Council President, to, um, Councilwoman Frisbee's question about the bond debt. Um, C V P had to hear the, from Arch, he's had sent us an email saying the principal of $2,150,000 in the interest of $90,625 outstanding, the debt will be retired in February 2027. And the total is $2,240,625.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman President.
I'm sorry, uh, thank you, Council President. So, um, just real quick, Mayor, with regard to the places like the hospital on Bellevue Avenue, the shopping center on Hermitage and Edgewood, on Edgewood. I know that you said these are private owners. Is there any way of us imposing fines for them sitting dormant, for them being dilapidated? Uh, and, uh, and if so, are we doing those things?
You have to do it in the framework of the, uh, vacant property law. So that's something you could ex- explore with Arch. But we do have a, um, ordinance in place that if you're a vacant property, you must register with the city and pay an annual fee. Um, that was the, the state's way of moving these projects along. Whether you can exceed that, uh, that's something that's up to your council. Uh, maybe he possibly knows if you could exceed that.
So my, my question is, I, I know that law, we, we have that in effect. I'm talking about even more with even upkeep. Um, they let their grounds go and it becomes unsightly. If you're living in the area, you don't want to go past the area because you don't know what's going on in there. We have a big problem, as most of us know, with, um, possums and all kinds of, um, creatures. And they get into these places. We have folks who go in and they live in, in these places. And it makes it even, your community even more unsafe. So, um, the more we can be creative and imposing fines for them leaving this, the property dormant, I think would be, uh, helpful for us in the long run. Um, and if we don't have the law in effect, we need to create it for our city and our community.
I agree, no, no argument there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yeah, Mayor, the, uh, vacant property fee, I think it's $3,000. Um, we should think about raising it higher because.
You have to do it within the confines of the law. So it's whatever the state allows us. But, um, yeah, I think that's something that, uh, uh, counsel, uh, your couns- your lawyer.
Right.
Should be able to.
Originally it was a thousand dollars and.
Yes, we did up.
We raised it up to 3,000. Um, but you're right, because there's properties, like my colleagues have said, that just sit there. And in the summertime, the weeds are overgrown. It's, so it's dilapidating and the whole land.
And frustrating for, for all of us, including the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Thank you. Direct, no other questions, right? Uh, the director, I mean, Mr. Richardson, any update?
So I, I did have a conversation with Director Bridges and he advised me that the investigation has been concluded. Uh, from the advice of council, there should be no, uh, rather, I should say, strike that, uh, vast council indicates that, uh, the findings were unsubstantiated and the final report can be made available at a later date.
Thank you so much. All right, there's no other, no other questions, we can move to roll call.
Uh, certainly, Madam President. For, uh, it's my understanding you'd like a roll call or vote on this at this time, correct?
Yes, please.
So for the Resolution 25 dash 12, Resolution consenting to appointment of Arch Liston as Director of Housing and Economic Development for the city of Trenton. Uh, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve Res- Resolution 25 12?
Some of.
Second.
Roll call, Council Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kettner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, Council.
And Madam President, if, uh, it's your wish, as my understanding, we do have an individual here present for the, uh, Brunswick Avenue redevelopment update.
Yes. Can we set the timer for 10 minutes, please?
Certainly.
Council members, this is the gentleman from Brunswick Avenue, he was delayed. Um, you want to introduce yourself and then explain your position, please?
Sure, uh, David Baruch, Vice President, Orbac Affordable Housing Solutions, uh, representing the developer.
Go right ahead, sir, if you have anything to present or if, I'm sorry, I'll refer to the council.
I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry, could you repeat your name again?
Sure, David Baruch.
Brew?
Baruch, B as in boy, A R U C H. Like the college.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you. Uh, sir, your title is Vice President.
Yes.
Okay, and so I have a bunch of questions, um, because, uh, roughly, uh, it would be almost two years ago, uh, the end of this March that we granted a pilot for the Brunswick Village, uh, project. And what was promised at that point were things besides the main renovations of each of the units, uh, that folks would, uh, not be displaced. Uh, but if they had to be for whatever reason, it would be put in hotel rooms. But there was a list of things that aren't big ticket items, such as adding a laundry room, after school program, computer lab, joint services with the local hospital, social services, new security system with lights, modernized cameras. Uh, and even, uh, we had talked about, uh, improving the garbage collection. And to this date, uh, we're at 22 months roughly, uh, there's been no improvement in the property. Um, my constituents have told me they have not seen any evidence of any improvements. Uh, Mr., uh, Director Liston was kind enough to, uh, tell us earlier, uh, about that you're going to be meeting with N J M H F A coming up. But as the Northwood representative who represents your development in our ward, in our city, it's very disappointing that not one of these improvements has happened. And I'd like to know why. My constituents want to know why. And they want to know when things are actually going to occur. Because if it's not going to happen and you need to go to M H F A for all your financing for little things, you know, it makes one wonder whether we should have given you the pilot.
Yeah, um, so, um, typically when we purchase a property for redevelopment, um, we do it through, uh, federal and state, sometimes state tax credit credits in this case. Um, in this case, we were unfortunately unable to do that in the initial acquisition. Um, and we thought that we would be able to do it in a much, much quicker timeline than has occurred. Um, that being said, we, we still plan on doing all of these, um, all these items and more that we promised for the, for the residents, um, and for the community there. Um, our plan is to start that renovation come March. Um, in a little bit less than two months. Uh, we have a timeline to close with N J H M F A to, uh, get the financing with, um, uh, for the tax exempt bonds, as well as, um, we have a path forward with, um, N J H M F A on the aspire credits and the, uh, federal tax credits. So there is a, a very, very clear and direct path forward, um, at this point right now.
So the, all the, all the services that were mentioned, after school program, computer lab, things like that, uh, joint services, uh, connection with the hospital, those are things that shouldn't be contingent on you getting financing from M H M H F A. So are they, are they all contingent on you receiving a round of financing?
We have the finance, we, we, we have it all lined up, so it's not.
But it's got to be approved still, correct?
Uh, it has to go through a, an approval process, yes.
Okay, so why weren't any of these smaller improvements done?
Um, I, I think, uh, we, we had to, uh, get to a point where, you know, just purchasing a property quickly, as we did. Um, we had to get to a point where we, uh, introduced the management, whenever you're turning over management, acquiring a new property, uh, it's getting your bearings and, um, it's never a simple process. Um, especially with the regulations that come with a low income housing property. And this project based section A property is, as this property is. Um, so we, um, it, it took a little bit longer than expected. And, um, to close on these tax credits has been, has taken a little bit longer than expected as well. So, um, it, it's kind of a mix of, of a few different things going on at the same time. But, um, like I said, we do have a very clear path forward in the next two months to get things going.
So if, uh, the financing doesn't happen next month, but I'm sure you expect that it will, will any of these minor improvements even happen?
Yes, no, we, we, we plan to do, we plan to do what we promised. It's, it's not that we don't plan on doing that no matter what. If we, you know, we made a promise, we're going to get it done. I think just the, the plan on when we closed originally was a, uh, six to eight month timeline. And it turned into a closer to a 22 to 24 month timeline, um, because of various factors, mostly out of our control.
Should we not have been updated on that sooner? I should, I, I, to me, and I'm not trying to beat you up here, but I should have had to make a request as a councilperson for you to, for your corporation to come back, say a year later, say, hey, sorry, guys, this is going a little slower. We, we, you know, this is what's happening, we're going to keep you updated. Because when you don't do that, it really looks bad for the city. It looks bad that, you know, we're putting our trust in. And it looks bad that, you know, as far as a pilot goes, that we shouldn't have been giving a pilot. So coming forward, we'll be getting a schedule from you, from what's going to happen from day one after you get approval through the end of the project. I think that's something we need to get. And then also some of these things like the laundry room, the security system, they need to be high priority. Because my constituents are very unhappy. The garbage collection with the one dumpster for that many units, that is atrocious. And that's something that can be easily worked out.
For sure, um, yeah, I'll make it, definitely make it a priority to, uh, to have the city updated and, uh, make sure the tenants are updated as well, um, with information, with the path forward. Um, uh, you know, definitely make sure the line of communication is open both ways so that, uh, with, if any tenants have any comments or issues, that they're comfortable coming to us and, uh, don't need to be, don't need to feel scared or anything that they're going to be displaced with any comments. So we, we always have, uh, an open door policy for our tenants.
Okay, and how soon will we be notifying the tenants? Because that was my next question about the renovations and updating them, because they haven't had an update either.
Yeah, I, I think probably within the next, um, week or two, we'll send out notices to tenants.
Can you promise tonight that you will do that within 14 days?
Um.
I'll give you 21.
Okay.
21 days?
I promise.
Okay, holding you to it, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. We look forward to working with you, but please also get us a schedule.
Yes.
Uh, anything information you can, Mr. Garcia, would be happy to pass out along to us.
Yeah.
So thank you very much, thank you for coming.
I appreciate it.
Thanks, Council President.
Are there any other council members that have questions?
Yes, Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman President.
So I just wanted to say, so, um, my, um, colleague here, she did mention what I actually wanted to ask you about. And that was, and she didn't directly ask, ask the question. So I do want to ask you, have there been any, has there been any communication at all to the tenants, the residents of this community?
Um, I mean, we're currently operating the property, so we're in constant communication with them. And, um, uh, with everything going on the property, we try not to, to let them know too early because tenants to get, tend to get, um, a little bit antsy. They hear the term renovation, they think they're getting displaced, that is not the case. So we try to, i- it, it's a tough balance to not do it too far in advance where things get delayed like they have for the past 20 months, but also do it in advance where they have enough notice. So it, it's a difficult straddle, but I, I think there's been some communication and we'll make sure that the tenants are just, are very aware that what's coming up and what their legal rights are and that they are not being displaced.
Okay, so I don't think it's a little far fetched that, uh, if you're saying, if we were expecting it to be done six to eight months and we're now at 22 months, I don't think that's a tenant expecting too much. I think at that point, after, heck, after 10 months, any form of communication. And I, I like to put it in a way, if you were the person who was anticipating someone to give you something, um, that they promised. And if you, they don't deliver on it, how would it make you feel? Whether you feel like you're being ignored or is there any, are they pulling something up, out from underneath you? So I would like to address it as if you, whatever you're doing, treat it as if something, someone of your loved ones lived there. And how would you like for someone to respond to you or to communicate with you? Because communication makes all the difference and how people will, will be receptive to you. or to communicate with you, because communication makes all the difference in how people will be receptive to you. Whether you, they're going to say they're good, they're on, on point, and yeah, they're doing what they said, what they promised, and they update us, or they're full of hot air, they're not doing anything, they're no better than anyone else. That's what we don't want. We're trying to establish relationships in our, in our city, and it starts with little things that are not so little like this. So that's really what I wanted to ask, is about the communication. Communication really is key, and if you could make that a priority, I'm sure that'll help. It's, it's nice to be that you're on the grounds, but if no one's communicating with anyone, you're not talking to them, it really doesn't make a difference if you're there or not. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the feedback. And like I said, it's, it really is a tough balance between letting them know too early and letting them know at the right time, because we've done it where we'll tell the tenants very early, and we'll be extremely communicative with them, and then they come back, and then it gets delayed like it is now. And they come back and say, hey, you told me a year ago you were going to renovate my apartment. Where's my, what's going on? And, you know, it's out of our hands. So it's, it's really a tough balance that we're, you know, we think there is sort, some sort of middle ground where it's not too early, not too late, and it's good for everyone. So like I said, we'll, we'll be sure to do that in the next three weeks, in the next 21 days. And we'll, you know, we usually also have a, a community-wide meeting with the tenants to bring questions and comments, so there isn't a mass panic in the project.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Councilwoman Harrison, I can't see other lights, sir.
Nobody else? Okay. My question is, you said it's going to start in March. Okay, originally it was six to eight months. Are we talking another 22 months, or is it going to be six to eight months?
Six to eight months till what?
What? What is the timeline going to be?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. When I said originally six to eight months, I thought, I, we thought it would be six to eight months to start.
To start?
Start, yeah.
Okay, what do you think the finish line, like, I mean?
Oh. Probably another, possibly by the end of the year. So about, anywhere from 10 to 12 months, let's say.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we try to do the renovation in an efficient way, where we're not displacing too many tenants at once temporarily.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get a general idea, because like you said, we just want to make sure you're going to, you're going to keep rolling.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harrison. Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, because this was a lot of information, maybe I missed it, but you were able to procure the money, you do have the funding to do the renovations?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, we, we have, we're not, I'm not here asking for, for money from the city, or we do have the funding lined up. We're just going through the, the bureaucratic process of getting the final approvals and working with our equity partners to, to, to line everything up.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. We have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, on your call, Madam President.
Move on to public comment for agenda items only, please.
Certainly. Madam President, just for a housekeeping item, it's my understanding that you may wish to bring-
The first-
Bring the first reading ordinance to the, to the beginning of the agenda, to directly, directly after public comment for agenda items only?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Did you want to take a-
That's the only one with Director Liston listed, right?
I believe so, yes. If you want to ask for a motion to adjust the agenda, to move that item to directly after public comment?
May I have a motion to move? The first amendment, yes, the amendment, the agenda to, to move up ordinance 25001 in regards to housing and economic, the only one that's on our docket, that way Mr. Liston can head home sooner.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And I do have the public comment footboards. And for public comment for docket items only, Madam President, I do not have anybody listed at this time. If it's your wish, you can move to the first, the first reading of the ordinance this evening. Would you like me to read that aloud?
Yes, please.
Certainly. Ordinance for first reading, ordinance 25-001, ordinance amending Chapter 132, Article 17, Section 135 of the Revised Ordinance of the City of Trenton to increase the cost for lead-safe inspections and add a filing fee for lead-safe certificates.
May I have a motion?
Yes, go ahead.
May I have a motion for ordinance 25001 for first reading?
So moved.
Second?
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on with the remainder, I'm sorry?
Mr. Garcia, that was the motion to move it up.
I'm sorry?
That was the motion to move it up, correct? We already did that.
We had done that, and then we moved-
Because I had a couple of questions on that, so I wanted to open it up.
Okay.
Sorry.
Actually, approved it already.
Yeah.
That was the motion to move it up.
Right, there was a motion to move it up.
Right, not vote on it.
Right. And then there's a second motion, which I imagine was to approve the ordinance. Did you? After the motion and the second to-
I think you asked for a motion to accept it, and then I guess they thought that it was a motion to discuss it.
Yeah, we were motion to discuss it, right?
Okay. Oh.
Can't the same motion still be used for that though?
Yes. To move it up.
Not to approve, okay. So we moved it up, I read it aloud, and now-
That's why I just want to make sure.
Okay.
Make sure I can write.
No worries, understood. So if you, Madam President, if you'd like discussion and to follow, follow vote at this time?
Yes, I believe there were several questions. I know some people have some concerns. And I know Councilwoman Feliciano submitted some of the questions that were asked from some of the people, from some of our residents, and I wanted to know if Director Liston will be able to answer some of those questions.
I certainly will. Let me just pull up the email from earlier.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Can I? If it's your pleasure.
Yes.
Can I read off the questions?
Yes.
Thank you. So Director Liston, the first question, and these questions were posed by Resident Bernard McMullin to the entire council body regarding this. What percentage of target properties have been inspected? And then how does this progress compare with the expectations of the New Jersey DEP?
Let me, just give me a second. Do you have, do you have the ones with, the ones we did answer? Do you have the, I'm, I'm looking for an email from Maria earlier regarding the answers to these questions.
I don't have it, I don't-
Let me see. It's from this morning.
The last correspondence I had from Director Richardson was that it was forwarded to the proper director and that we would hear back, but I hadn't seen anything back.
Oh, man. Yeah, I saw the response today, and I thought it was sent to the council. I have the-
And you don't have none from Maria, right?
Okay. I apologize for the delay with them. Yeah, but I have one from 6:31 this morning. And Yolanda responded. Was the first test for being appointed, I really, you don't have any, I thought the answers were given.
Those questions that we're talking about were submitted after the docket review.
Okay.
This might be a long one.
Cell phone.
Uh huh.
Send to my cell phone.
I don't see anything.
Did you get, did you get a copy of that? Did you get a copy of that email this morning? Yolanda has responded, we forwarded to council this morning.
I would like to ask my colleagues, I want to actually move to table this until we get the information.
Yeah, if I, I'll search for it while you do that, and then I can come back, and once I find the answers, I'll let you know.
Okay, so you want to come back to this one?
Should be tabled till our next meeting.
Yeah, because there's several questions on this.
Yeah.
So I would like to have a motion to table this one?
So moved. We would table this till our next meeting.
Second?
Thank you.
So move, that's a move to table?
Yes, sir.
Yes, to the next, to the following meeting.
Okay, so to table until the next scheduled meeting for first introduction, correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, and that was moved by?
So that's good. Councilwoman Frisbee and-
Second by Feliciano, thank you. Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano. Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. Matter's tabled until the next scheduled meeting for first reading. Moving on with the agenda, Madam President?
Yes, January 21st.
Yes.
Certainly. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications and reports?
I have a motion to approve communication and reports.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And moving on to resolutions at this time. Madam President, are there any items that you wish to extract for questions and discussion from potential consent agendas this evening?
Any council members want to ask any questions on any of-
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Thank you. 25010?
10, yes.
Council President?
Yes.
25003.
Council President, 25010 and 25007.
Thank you.
Shaking not stirred.
I believe that's it. No, oh, sorry. Let's wait, give us another minute or so.
008, please.
008. I think that's all. So Mr. Garcia, as of right now, we have 2511, 25004, 25006, 25009. And that would be all for the consent, so far?
Oh, for consent, yes, sorry.
For consent, and then we, the rest, we're going to start the questions.
Council, yeah. Humbly, Madam President, did you wish to have questions answered and-
Yes.
A determination as to whether or not to be on consent?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I believe we're starting off with Mr. Liston then for 25010.
25010, yes, please.
Council President?
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Thank you. Hi, Director Liston.
Good evening.
Good evening again. Just a, a quick question. How much is the, the second addendum, is there an increase in this?
What there is, is we've run into some cost increases because of electrical issues and sewer issues. There is a total increase to the overall grant, which is $2,000. So it brings it from a total grant amount from 90 to 92,000. What it also does is allow for release of funds of the 15,000 to the contractor, so he can wrap up 98% of the project, and will hold back $2,000 for, until he gets a C.O. We've been working with him on a daily basis. I had an inspector out there today to, to see what was being done. There are some issues that have to be corrected over the next couple of days. But we've been following up with it, but this will allow us to release the funds to the contractor, so we can move it much quicker.
So the addendum is $2,000. The additional amount we're adding to this is 2,000?
Correct, but it also allows for the release of the 15,000 from 75 to the 90.
Right, okay. So the, the, on this resolution that I'm looking at, I don't, all I see is just the, the 90,000 in the narrative, but not the 2,000. So we remember as we move forward, when we're bringing forth resolutions to council, to add the amount so we could see it in the title as well, the 2,000, because I wasn't, I wasn't-
It was on the second page, it should have been on the second page.
It says 2,000? Okay, I'm sorry, the one I'm, the one I'm looking at doesn't have what you have, so, okay, very good. Then I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay.
That was the only question I had. I know Councilwoman Williams had a question.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Mr. Liston, Director Liston, so, you know, obviously, we all know that this project has been fraught with different delays for all different, you know, different reasons, we'll get into that. But it's been very stop and go. I know even we're closing last year to get that completed, and thankfully, that was completed. At the outset of this whole entire endeavor, was, was the estimate of how much it would cost for this project realistic? Was it something that was just, for whatever reason, was underestimated? And going forward, should this program, and we hope, pray that it will be completed next month for Ms. Sullivan and the City of Trenton, should this program be continued going forward, what improvements would you want to make based on the lessons we learned with this first house?
The estimates initially for this project were, were realistic, very realistic. Again, with delays in construction materials and, and anybody who has a historic home knows, when you open the wall, you dig underneath the house, you find, you, you run into additional costs. And actually, the contractor was looking for about an additional 15,000. We'd be able to go and sharpen our pencils, and so the total increase would only be 2,000 compared to the 15. As to the continuation of this program, much of the delays were involved back and forth with legal issues. The, Ms. Sullivan was- The, Ms. Sullivan was represented by legal counsel and we were represented by legal counsel. Many things went back and forth, and when things were getting done, when they weren't getting done. And it still held up a little bit by some of the, the issues. She is not represented at this point, which has been somewhat of a delay. So, you know, we're, we're trying to push this thing to forward unilaterally so we can get this thing wrapped up before it gets worse out of the weather. As to the continuation of this program, I think the pilot program was a, a, a very good learning experience for the, for a process. And for a process that has to be tweaked in many different ways and making sure that, you know, the city has the right partners. And making sure that, you know, our contractor can work with the homeowner much better. Because this is a grant program to the homeowner who then is funneled to the contractor and not directly paid by the city in that way. So there, we found numerous issues with, with the program. Continuing in this form, I think we have to kind of sit down with, with council and, and kind of feel how we want to go with this and how much money do we have available for residents and then how much we want to really, you know, spend in the future in a project like this.
Very much, Director. Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So Mr. Director Liston, going forward, and I do hope that this program does continue, I think it's a good learning experience for us. One of the things I would really like to see is to have the resident, the homeowner, not so much involved. I think it is, with the exception of going to classes and actually teach them about how, what's going on, the whole process of it, and how to actually prepare for taking care of a home, be it from the mortgage to the electricity, to the water, to the upkeep of it. Getting them to the finish line, I think that they should be, that they're not contractors, they're not developers, they don't know the process. And I think, and then having to, for Ms. Sullivan's case, having her have to actually retain legal counsel with funds that we know that she didn't have, which puts stress. So it's, these are added stress factors and I'd love for us to continue with this, but to mitigate the stress that is going to be put on them. We want to do something that's going to be uplifting and that's going to build the community and then, and encourage others so that we can continue this type of program. But I really think that they should not be the middleman and that's what it seems like that happened there. And she should not have been there unless she got, she interjected herself. I believe that, that let the people who are paid and have been educated in these matters, they're the ones that should be handling it and not the residents, unless they're just being informed of what's being done.
I agree. There should be a coaching mechanism to help people through. A couple of things, Ms. Sullivan was represented pro se, so there was no out-of-pocket expenses for her legal fees, which was very fortunate on her side. As to the way we have to manage a project like this, is if we get overly involved and it becomes a, becomes a public project, which means we must bid a project. We must have an architect prepare the bid specifications. It was, so it would take a project for someone to do a private home from maybe ninety thousand dollars into the area of a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy thousand. That's kind of why this was structured this way, so we didn't letting the homeowner be the person receiving the grant and then paying the contractor. Otherwise, we become, we become the contractor and we run into every bidding specification, every purchasing requirement that the state requires, which makes these, these costs prohibitive in the future. And that's why it was structured this way. But again, that's, I think, a conversation we have to have with council in how we move forward with this program. Because we did find many weaknesses, maybe, and we tried to look at the Habitat model, because Habitat, and I think we need to model or work with in future projects with Habitat. And I think, or a organization such as Habitat, so they have coaching, they have people who know how about construction. So we can move forward with these projects and not have it happen like this in the future.
So I agree, and I, and I love the idea of using Habitat for Humanity. I've worked on them, with them a couple of times. But again, even if we're going to have the resident, the homeowner involved, just having them, maybe have a coach as they go along the way. So this way, that is provided by the city, someone that is, is to give them guidance, because if you don't know, you can't do it. And you stumble, you fumble along the way. So having someone to actually help, hold them, their hand along the way would be absolutely helpful.
And it's essential, I think that, that's a very good point. And that's essential in moving forward with a lot of projects we're going to bring forward with the redevelopment or rehabilitation projects that we're going to do with homeowners and getting people in the houses. Is that the weakness we follow is the fact that people not understanding the cost and when you get into a project, how expensive it can be and how delays run and just putting kitchens in, utilities, getting utilities in properly and inspection processes through U C C. So I agree a hundred percent, there's just a lot of different ways we have to do this. We learned a lot, we really did.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Madam President?
Councilwoman Edwards?
Thank you. Just a couple of.
Council Vice President, sorry.
No worries, it takes some adjustments. I just want to say first of all, thank you to you and the mayor and the department for doing your due diligence with this. I know this was something that was very public and you received a lot of criticism on it. So I just want to, you know, say thank you for taking the time out to address this and especially the mayor with going out to the property. I had arrived at the property maybe five minutes after he left and I got the chance to talk to the contractor and he walked me through the entire property and explained everything very, very thoroughly. And some things that I was able to assess from our conversations and from the feedback from the mayor as well when we inquired about this was that, to Councilwoman Frisbee's point, the lack of training and lack of knowledge for the homeowner. So I would love to see some partnership with Habitat for Humanity as well as I O S with their first time homeowner training.
Yes.
But also incorporate that renovation training too. But to Councilwoman Frisbee's point, we spoke about needing someone in H E D to handle this, to be a project manager. And I know there are staff shortages that prevents that type of hand-holding process. So I would like to see that going forward if we're going to do, continue to do projects like this. But more importantly, I think there needs to be a contract in place binding the owner to the scope of work that was assessed. So if we're giving her ninety thousand dollars, all of that should have been in the contract and signed by the administration herself as well as the contractor and maybe even any attorneys if that's necessary to hold her to that. Because the issue was she kept on changing or doing work change orders. So she added on a half bathroom and that kind of blew, well, I'm not kind of blew the budget, but it blew the budget. And, and thankfully, the contractor, a well-renowned contractor, Andre Williams in the city, was willing and able to work with her because this is not about the money for him, this is about fighting the blight in the city. So he was able to work with her, but not every con, well, that's a rarity. So I would like to see if we move forward with a pilot like this, when we're looking to reform it, that that type of contract is in there and that type of training is incorporated, because it is, it is a huge thing to take on for the very first time on your own. Like, we're not talking about a simple remodel, we're talking about a full-blown renovation, gut rehab. And that's a, that's a huge project for any, even an experienced contractor. So, and we talk about independence and things like that, and that's important for the owners to be involved in the whole process and it's a learning thing for them. With that being said, during the budget hearings that we had last year, there were some vacancies in H E D. When we talk about needing a manager and the staff shortages, where are we with hiring people and like, how much staff do you have? How many vacancies are there and where are we with hiring and filling those positions?
We're, the biggest focus we have right now in H E D is the, the, the planning board and zoning board. Because nothing can move in a city unless we have a planning and zoning boards moving projects forward. And we could, we got backed up with those two boards and landmarks. So we're, we did bring in a senior planner, a supervising planner, excuse me. We've also hired a program analyst. And today we had a discussion about bringing in a second, another planner to get the backlog cleaned up. We've got a good one-year period of backlogs. And my concern being with the larger projects that we're going to have coming in, hopefully in Roebling and Enterprise Avenue and the hotel. There's going to be quite a burden for the planning group up there to move those to the planning board or zoning board or wherever they need to go to. So we've, we've got to staff up. The other thing is with that process, construct more, we're going to have much more construction in the city, which means we're going to have to staff up the construction office to deal with the additional construction. Also, we're going to have the smaller contractors coming in with the rehab projects. So there's a lot of stuff that's going to be moving that we're going to have to staff up. And, and we are looking to do that, actually in the budget hearings, we're canceled yesterday, we, we know that we have to staff these, these up to move these projects along and make redevelopment and development work in the city, because it, it's going to be a failure if we can't get this process moving quicker.
Awesome, thank you.
Sure, my pleasure. And real quick, I emailed you the, the answers, I found them in my email, so they have council for the next meeting, okay?
Thank you.
I'll favor the council.
Thank you. Can that be moved? Is everyone okay with that, you know, the consent agenda? Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano? Can that be moved over? Okay, so we can move that to the consent?
Consent agenda, thank you.
She said yes. Thank you. Next was twenty-five zero zero three. I think that was Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg.
Thank you, Council President.
Steve Wilson, Police Director.
Hi, Director, how are you this evening?
Good, and you?
Thank you. So I asked these questions actually in advance and I did send responses to the questions to my colleagues earlier last week. But I just, for the public, I wanted the public to be made aware of some of the questions that were asked as this is the deadliest intersection, one of the deadliest intersections in the United States. So I just wanted to ask some questions for the public. So with regard to this company that we are contracting or extending their contract for two additional years, what I had brought up was that from two thousand to two thousand nineteen, there were nine fatal crashes at this intersection. So from bringing this company on, I know that there was a, there were a couple of crashes on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, March seventh, twenty twenty-one, February twenty twenty-four, just to name a couple. And I just wanted to know during the times that these crashes had occurred under this new contract with this company, were, are we able to expand the times that we have crossing guards through this contracted company that we're paying to try to mitigate some of these crashes that are occurring outside of like peak business hours?
Well, they, they operate from oh seven hundred to nineteen hundred, seven to seven. So if we were to expand past seven P M., that would have cost additional monies and would probably have to go out to bid again.
Okay, so outside of what D O T is trying to do for this intersection, I know they're trying to narrow the lanes and they, they, you know, brought forth some other mitigating factors to try to make this intersection less lethal, less deadly than what it is, for lack of a better word. What other things can we do in the meantime? Because I know construction from D O T, the latest that they're trying to do is not going to start, I think, until twenty twenty-six. So what other things can we put into place in the meantime to try and lessen the blow of that intersection?
Well, I think the D O T put in pedestrian detection technology there as well. This intersection kind of belongs to the state. I don't know how much we can do more to mitigate that. And I know that they are going to try to, at one point, narrow this intersection to slow down the traffic. Pretty much, it basically wasn't designed very well. There's no room to even put a walkway to go over one twenty-nine because the senior building is right there, the railroad tracks are right there on the other side for the river line, and it's not a very good design. So until they can narrow this intersection and slow down the traffic, I, I think what we've been doing is probably the best practice that we can do right now.
Okay, and yet some of those other issues are the cemetery that's there and then I guess the elevated crosswalk with those coming out of the senior building being differently abled and things of that nature and putting a elevator there would be problematic, you know, giving that someone could get caught in there or something can happen in the elevator late at night. So I know that those issues have been addressed. So I just wanted, like I said, I just pretty much wanted to know if we were having those conversations and to the point that this is state-owned, D O T is responsible. Are any of these funds that we are paying to Tri-County Security or any other security company moving forward or any, anything that we're putting in place as a city, are these funds coming from the state at all for this? Or is it, is this all on city dollar?
This comes out of the city police budget.
Okay, okay. And I know that at some point we were using crossing guards appointed by T P D. I think T P D was hiring the crossing guards, but now we have it outside the contracting agency or company. Can you just kind of tell us what the need for the shift was or the reason for the shift in the companies from T P D to the contractor and company?
The only time since I've been director that we had T P D officers out there is when Tri-County couldn't cover because of whether there are manpower issues of someone calling off sick and they couldn't get replacement officer, they would notify us and we would stick a police officer out there.
Okay, okay. And, all right, thank you, Director, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So Director Wilson, I know that cameras are not allowed there. I know the state is again, against that for whatever their reasons are. I believe that there are rumble strips on that piece of property, that, is that correct?
Yeah, I think there's rumble strips along the length of one twenty-nine. And I do, they do have traffic cams out there, because we've actually utilized them in some of our crash investigations.
One of the things, and I don't know if this is something, if it's on the state side or if it is on the city side, but with putting speed humps there. I know we have the rumble strips, but even that, can we put a speed hump as, as right at that end, as they're coming into the city to force them to slow down?
No, you, you can't put a speed hump on a major thoroughfare and that's actually a state highway, so.
So that is still considered state highway, right?
Yes.
As you're coming in, as soon as you hit the city?
Yeah, as soon as you're, when you're coming off of I nine, one ninety-five, coming over the bridge down into the city of Trenton, it's a state highway.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Anything else?
So Council President, just had a suggestion slash question. One thing, because it's particularly high speed and that would come under the Federal Highway Administration, but as well as the director talked about N J D O T, perhaps a blinking light approaching vehicle might be appropriate and legal to put on one twenty-nine to warn oncoming traffic, particularly tractor trailers, that there is a pedestrian crosswalk there. But that would be something, based on my experience so far, that would need to be a request from the city, potentially with a letter from police department to state D O T.
So.
Did you talk about that?
There is a traffic light.
I'm sure you did, but I just wanted to.
There's a traffic light there. So I don't know if putting an additional blinking light would actually do any, any benefit. The, where the benefit would be, would be outside the city on, on a one ninety-five before you hit the bridge.
Yes, that's exactly it.
I know there were some discussions on putting blinking lights before they come off of the exit, before they even get to the traffic light, just to kind of start to slow them down.
Yeah.
Yes, and then just one additional, because we've put in a request on Route One to help cut down on the jake braking when the trucks automatically, because of the air pressure and their engines do that grinding noise. It's very annoying to residents to have signs put out on Route One, they could do this on the approach from Hamilton on one twenty-nine, one ninety-five, to warn drivers that there are approaching curves coming up better than what is there currently.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg and then Councilman Harrison.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I do know, like I said, the D O T is planning. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear. I do know, like I said, the D O T is planning a number of things. It's not just a narrowing of the intersection. But, you know, I just wanted to be clear that I just was concerned from now until then, because I do want them to do the brunt of specifications, safety measures moving forward, because it is their responsibility. But my questions were basically from here until then. Thank you.
I can, I could answer the Colonel for additional assistance out there with his troopers, maybe. Maybe we can get something, something done.
Yeah, I did partner with D O T on two occasions to do presentations to the public, one at South Village and one with Foundation Academy. So they did answer a lot of those questions, which is great. Like I said, like my concern is from now until then. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kattonburg.
Madam President.
Councilwoman Harrison and then Councilwoman Edwards.
Director, you said that the proposal is from two lanes, the one lane, I totally agree with that. That'll slow down the traffic. Problem is that you're right, it's people just need to slow down, people drive way too fast. You know, that's why all those car accidents are there. The speed limit is forty miles an hour and you're getting people doing sixty, seventy. That's the problem. And your people are trying to walk across. By the time they're going to hit the brakes, people can get hurt or killed. And, and you're right, we gotta do it all we can, but you're right, we need to slow down this city. People drive way too fast and that way we would have a lot less car accidents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Edwards. Vice, Council Vice President.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I was just discussing some ideas while we're talking about the safety because I'm not sure if most of you remember that this was something that I had sent a letter to the D O T earlier this year to discuss some safety measures. And they do have a plan. I'm just having some trouble finding their response. They did take some measurements. There are flashing lights. There's rumble strips and things like that. But I wanted them to take it a step further to where each side is operating one time, one at a time. And, and I was just thinking about an idea, when you're coming off the highway, when that light starts to turn red to like, we have the arms for the Riverline, it would be helpful for them to have that arm getting on and off.
I agree.
So people can cross safely and also the cars could go across safely. But I wanted to get back on track because I know that's not your job. Security, I mean, crossing guards. How many crossing guards do we currently have? And, or if you have that knowledge off the top of your head, or I can follow up on this, and how many vacancies do we have?
Okay, well, just to make a distinction, the Tri County Security is adult crossing guards. They're not, to be confused with the school crossing guards. They're two separate entities. And the answer to that, to give you an exact number, I'll send the email to Brandon tomorrow for that. But I believe we have roughly thirty vacancies for our school crossing guards.
And, and we have a budget for all of these crossing guards, correct?
Yes, we're just, we're having a hard, hard time hiring. We, we are in a constant state of hiring for crossing guards.
Where are these job postings at listed?
Well, you can, you can hire, come here to City Hall. That's where you have to put your application in and then we'll take it from there. I could, I could put something out in the media again. From time to time, we do put it out on our social media. But I can get with Paul to put it on the city's website, too.
That would be excellent. I would love to see our vacancies. We have a job posting on the website, but I only ever see about three things posted. And there's people that want jobs with, you know, every department in the city, but they're not there. So I would love to see that. Thank you.
I would too. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. That was it? That was it? Are we okay to put that on the consent agenda? Yes. All right, Mr. Garcia.
Consent?
Yes, please.
Noted.
I believe the next one was twenty-five dash zero zero seven.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. For Director Harris.
Paul Harris, Interim Director of Recreation.
Thank you very much, Director. So my question, I'm really glad to see this and each month it seems that we are accepting grants. And I believe, to my knowledge, I was at both of the meetings that you had in two thousand twenty-four regarding the entire project and explaining how we're having to accumulate financing for
Right.
the grants. So I don't know if the final number changed how much we need, but how much funding do we have and how much is still left?
So the product's, the product's going to cost twenty million dollars. We have ten million dollars. We're still waiting for some grant agreements, so I don't have ten million dollars on the books just yet. So we're just steadily building that reserve so we can move forward. It just takes a lot of time. And we, just so you understand, this has been over multiple administrations. So we do not expect with the incoming administration for it to change. Because we received some funding in the previous administration when they were in power. So we don't expect anything to change. So it's just, just takes time.
Okay. And then in this coming year, can you just give us some highlights on what the approach will be, no matter how difficult the incoming administration may or will be, what will be the strategy to try to maybe through other sources, whether they're nonprofit even, to gather the rest of the funding and then are there any ways that council could help with that, sir?
So what our strategy is going to be is to show that we're a good steward of money and we've built and we're building and I'm hoping we can get more capital money. And I think that if we can show them, listen, we have built and we have receipts to show that we did a good job and the public is happy, you can trust us with money. That's it. We have good grant writers. We're going to put them to use, paying them good money. And they're going to do it. They're going to apply for everything. My pop, my response to my entire staff is A R P is done. That was the best thing that happened to us. Seventy-two million dollars. We need to find a way because it doesn't mean we're going to stop building and I want to fix and build everything I can. So they're looking at all levels of government, at all levels of government. We had a million dollars that came from the state, A R P money recently for Cooper. So we're looking. So that's not going to be an issue. The question for us is getting enough. And my focus isn't just on the acid pink, that greenway, it's throughout the city. What I don't want to get distracted with is the notion that we're, we're going to apply for everything just for that site.
No, and I understand that just this particular site, and as you said, it's multiple initiatives going way back, is such a key transformative park system and a greenway for the North Ward, but also will help us with a lot of the pollution issues. So I'm also wondering, do you need additional grant writing help, grant administration help? And are there any ways, I mean, hopefully D C A will be able to provide additional financing or maybe staffing support?
No, so I have to be mindful because we're budget season, you'll be, I'm going to be coming asking for things, but I'm mindful of bringing on additional staff. We have a, we have a consultant group that's doing this work for us now. Could we hire someone internally to do it? Yes. But the company we've had has been with us for a long time and they do very good work. I would like to retain them. So you'll probably see me come back to ask for an additional appropriation to continue their services. Because they not only do grant writing, but they're doing construction administration, they do brownfield redevelopment, all that stuff like that. So I'm optimistic about that. So, and I want to make sure the staff that we're bringing on are staff that we need for, in other areas at this point. You know, and of course, if the budget takes a turn, then we'll have a conversation about bringing on a permanent staffer to do grant writing.
Okay. Thank you very much, Director. Thank you, Council President. And consent agenda, please.
Thank you. And then I think the last one was twenty-five zero zero eight.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg.
Thank you, Council President. Hello, Director. How are you?
Good, good, good.
So I already asked you this question again. This is for the public.
For the public.
So the additional monies for the Marie Terminal, Terminal Park, which is down Duck Island, can you just explain what that, those funds are, will be used for?
Yeah. So you previously approved money for the same grant for D C A and we did, we built the playground with it. Okay. So now what I want to do is I want to restore the bathroom, lighting. That bathroom has a pump station, so we need to be, do some electrical work there. There are some historic artifacts there as well that have flat tires. They're, it's just, they're dated like a hundred, century old. So what I'm going to do is I need to build concrete platforms so I can, and then I want to move them so they're placed properly. I need to replace the, the parking lot as well, resurface that and do some other housekeeping issues there. So what you'll see is, these people should have, you know, parks should have bathrooms, you know? And we want to make sure that's restored. So that's just one phase there. And then we had, you know, yeah, there's other things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I be on the consent agenda? Thank you. All right, Mr. Garcia, looks like.
Certainly. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of resolutions twenty-five dash zero zero three, zero zero four, zero zero six, zero zero seven, zero zero eight, zero zero nine, zero zero ten and zero zero eleven.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Vice President Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonburg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, moving on with the agenda this evening, I believe we've reached the point of public comment. If I could have the general public comment clipboard once again. And Madam President, we have nobody listed for public comment this evening. If it's your wish, you may move to any member of. I'm sorry? Okay. Yeah, now we'll need him to sign. All right, Madam President, we have one individual signed up for public comment this evening to the public. Public comment will be five minutes. Will last five minutes. You may address any item that you wish. The council is not obligated to respond. Our individual listed for public comment is Maurice Hallett. Going up, sir?
Good evening, Council. Maurice Hallett, Levin West Front Street, nineteen eleven Smokehouse Barbecue. I'd like to talk about parking downtown. Through social media, you've probably seen that a lot of people are getting ticketed downtown late night. And I actually sat before the previous council before you guys in two thousand seventeen. Just to take you back on a little history, it was a Sunday evening. I had a full house back when things were happening downtown. A lot of people from out of town had a great time. They left that night to a street full of ticketed cars. There's, no matter what kind of great night you had, you're going to forget about it after getting a fifty-five dollar ticket. Especially when downtown is typically empty. For a long time, nineteen eleven Smokehouse was the only thing open after the state went home. And as you guys know, with, after COVID, things just haven't been the same in the restaurant industry. It's been really tough to survive downtown. And for the past ten years that we've been in business, we've been open pretty much seven days a week. We've just recently reduced our hours to cut costs to survive. But when your customers are getting hit with tickets on a Sunday afternoon, I mean, Sunday evening or late night Saturday, I mean, that absolutely makes no sense. And if you read some of the comments on social media, people are talking about not coming back downtown. So that hurts the businesses that are there that are trying to survive. And if we don't survive, we're never going to get other businesses to come in. So we're talking about revitalizing downtown. We need help. I have no idea why someone would be ticketing. And back to when I was before council before, the council was able to do an ordinance because Front Street didn't have parking at that point in time. So there was an ordinance that was passed to where parking was available on Front Street after five P M. I have talked to Anthony Santoro several times because those signs were never updated. And I hear now he's on sick leave, I believe. So I need those signs to be updated because the current signs still say no parking. So the parking people are probably going by the current signs. But there is an ordinance out there, if Mr. Clerk, Mr. Garcia, if you can get that ordinance, but they're supposed to be parking on Front Street after five P M. The other thing, which I'm not sure if you guys are aware of, but the parking meters, once we redid the sidewalks and streets, were never reinstalled. So how do you give someone a ticket if they don't have an opportunity to pay for parking? So it's just like a whole lot of foolishness that's going on that I would hope that someone would get addressed because it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, we are, I no longer live in Jersey. I have businesses in Jersey and four properties in Trenton because I love my city. I want to see this city succeed, but when I see craziness, it's just like, well, why am I doing this? So any help you guys can do, and I definitely need those signs up. And could someone talk to the Trenton parking, whoever is this new Castoffo type meter maids that are just, it just makes no sense. They need to know that there is parking available on Front Street. And then if T P A or whoever can get the word out that we do as businesses have, what is it? We have parking vouchers, two hour parking vouchers for the Front Street lot. I mean, Front Street lot should be open, it should be free for the weekend. It used to be. I don't know what it is now. And it would be nice if, once we get ready to open back up in the spring for longer hours, if that parking garage stayed open till midnight. Because we need help. So I want people to come downtown. I'm sure you want people to come downtown, but we got to work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hallett.
Madam President, that's all the individuals I have listed for public comment at this moment. If it's your wish, you can start with any individual you like for civic comment.
Yes, we can begin with Councilwoman Williams.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am. I have several announcements and then potentially a question. So first thing is we're going to have the North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council meeting on Wednesday, January fifteenth, next Wednesday at five thirty at Galley Baptist Church, at four forty M L K. Our special guest will be Wes Bridges, our City of Trenton Law Director. I have a discussion about the law department. And secondly, we have a really cool event coming up this Friday night. Actually, it's going to be January ninth, tenth and eleventh, but there's an opening reception on Friday night the tenth. It's called Sister Soul. It's a Sarah Dash legacy exhibit put on by the Trent Music Experience. There's a great committee of folks on a nonprofit. And that's going to be doing a lot of music events. And see, but this first one has to do with the great Sarah Dash from our city and the legacy of her music and her being the first music ambassador of Patti LaBelle and the Bluebells. And if you could please join everybody there at the Trent Music Experience Pop-Up Gallery at one oh two North Broad Street, at M C C C Mercer County Community College's building. And there'll be music, there'll be memorabilia, there'll be videos and it's surely going to be a good time. And the reception this Friday night is from five P M. to eight P M. And hope to see you there. Third item is a sad item. Would like to, if people do not know, is the passing of Mr. Kenneth Bullock. He apparently passed away on Christmas Eve. A great man, very generous, wonderful man. He and his family, his wife, Lenora, every year. Mr. Bullock was an avid fisherman and would go fishing in the North Atlantic for a number of months, catching fish and more fish and more fish and would store them. And each summer they would hold him and his family and his wife Lenora a very generous fish fry that was free to the entire community. It was a wonderful time. I was blessed to be there several times to experience it for myself. And this past summer was the twelfth annual Fish Fry. And there's hope that that legacy will continue with his wonderful family. So if folks can keep the Bullock family and their thoughts and prayers, that would be great. And he was a great Trentonian for sure. So one of the things I did want to bring up, and Mr. Harris is with us tonight, because this issue with parking has really gotten out of control in a lot of places. And to get fair information, get accurate information, I'd like to use some of my time tonight to ask Mr. Harris a few questions because. Because to Mr. Hallett's point, thank you for bringing that up tonight, sir. We do need to make sure people can safely and securely go downtown and have access to parking without being ticketed if we're going to create a downtown or recreate a downtown post-COVID. So I'd like to know if you can come up to the podium, sir. One of the questions I get from constituents and business owners is, to the point Mr. Hallett made, do we actually have P E Os, Parking Enforcement Officers, working until eleven o'clock at night? What are the hours? What's the situation particularly downtown where you, yes, particularly on the first block of South Warren and the second block of South Warren between State and Lafayette, you do not have parking meters? There's no kiosk? And where feels that we're penalizing people for coming to Trenton?
So Paul Harris, interim director, Parks and Recreation. So what I will say is, everything, the expansion of parking enforcement is the direct result of conversations with council, conversation with the community. There's literally a million emails from the community that come in. They're still sending emails about commercial vehicles. So parking enforcement works seven to three, and then three to eleven. There's one officer on three to eleven. And there's an office, because I'd see the post, why is someone working at eleven o'clock? You have officers working at eleven o'clock because there are people in the most congested parts of the city that said they want officers working. Because there's alleyways being blocked, there's there's commercial vehicles on streets. So they are enforcing those, they're enforcing those laws. That's what they're doing. But I just had to make it clear that that growth is a result of people calling. And what they do is, they enforce, if there's a sign, that's all they're looking at. Customer service is important. We've reminded them, and I've reminded the supervisor of parking enforcement that, listen, customer service is important. There's no reason to be rude. Listen, you issue your ticket and you move, you move on. If there's a need to explain, you explain. But.
Out another minute, please, or nine.
If that's your wish, Madam President.
So that's how we're handling it. But we are working on customer service. We do have regular meetings. And we explain to them, listen, these complaints are coming in, what can we do? And they also have the right to exercise discretion as well. You know, the issue becomes is, on the flip side is, we're often blamed for not enforcing the ordinances. They say that all the time. What's the point of having all these laws we don't enforce? So now you have a group of people that you've hired that are Trentonians that live in, you know, that are enforcing the very laws that they accuse us of not enforcing. That's the issue. So it's a double-edged sword, you know, and then when we're out there, people are happy, but you know. The biggest complaint we have is the commercial vehicles, which is why additional officers are being brought on to handle that.
Thank you very much. And may I just ask one little more pointed question to follow my first question, ma'am?
Counselor doesn't mind, because I had a couple of questions just while we're on this topic.
With regard to the kiosks that don't exist, how are people getting ticketed if there's nowhere to put money in it?
So I will look into that, but and the kiosks are managed by traffic and transportation. I know when there are kiosks down, we encourage officers to not issue tickets, because what are you doing issuing a ticket if there's no working kiosk?
I got to get there.
You know, and that's, that's an issue that we are constantly addressing.
Thank you very much. Thank you, ma'am.
Before you leave, if there was any other questions anyone else been chiming in to, but I do have one, interim Harris. As far as kind of in the downtown area, I forget the name of the street, right off of Lafayette, across where the hotel is, those side streets. Those, it's not Barrett, it's, oh, God. Yes, there you go. Those residents, where are they supposed to park? Because they're receiving tickets and they live on that small street. So when they're parking on Lafayette, they seem to be getting ticketed also.
So what I would, my recommendation is, there are a lot of residents who live in districts who are getting tickets. For example, let's say you're off work. And you could live in a district where there is no parking allowed between four P M. and six P M. And you did that by this, well, the previous councils did that by design because the goal is to get traffic in and out of the city, right? So but if you're home, or you're home early, you're going to get a ticket because you're parked in that district. So my recommendation is, we could identify all these areas where where they're residential, and then it's up, it's at the will of the council to decide that they want to address that. Because there are people who live on Perry Street, there are people who live right down here who've complained on a regular basis, rightfully so. How am I getting a ticket if I live, I pay taxes, I work here, and our response has been, the law says what the law says. The same reason with the street sweepers. We get beat about the street sweepers. But the sign says this, you move whether the sweeper comes or not. Now, I agree, there's an issue with that.
Because the sweepers are not coming.
Right.
In some areas, absolutely.
Exactly. But that's, if the council decides that you want to amend an ordinance to say that if the sweepers is down, then that's, then the parking enforcement officers will abide by that ordinance. In the meantime, the sign is what governs how they move.
So thank you for that, because that is something we need to revisit. But also, just, just a sidebar too on this. I've seen posts, and I was trying to find it today because I wanted to bring this up during my civic comment, but since you're up here now. I've seen posts from some of our individuals who are issuing tickets, who are bragging about the tickets that they're giving. So I understand enforcing, I couldn't find it because I scrolled past it and then I just, I couldn't find where it was at. You know, it's a difference between enforcing the tickets and then just kind of taking advantage of some of our people. And it's like, I said, the residents who are living there, I saw the one guy, he was very upset. He got a ticket on a Sunday across from the hotel, and he was on Lafayette, but he lives on that one street. And I just kind of caught him when he was going off. And I just so happened to be coming out of the War Memorial. And so it's just, it's just those little things that make it look even worse. We already are, we have an issue with the parking, and then you have people that are bragging about how many tickets they're giving out. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention because maybe you weren't aware of that. Councilwoman Frisbee, and then Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So thank you, Council President. So interim director Harris, thank you for being here for this. One of the things that I think might help is if we look at, have those tickets looked at that are being given. If you, if you're getting, receiving a ticket in a place, in a space that does not have a meter, does not have a kiosk, they should not be ticketed. That ticket should be weighed. That's, that is just taking, you can't pay for something that you're not even given an opportunity to pay for. So anyone who's received a ticket that is not in a, on a location, that is not have a kiosk, we should absolutely, that ticket should not be honored. Next, maybe we need to have a, and one, I want to commend our parking, our parking authority, because they are, they are doing what they're supposed to. They're out there doing their job. And yes, there was a lot of complaints that we have, these kiosks, and no one is enforcing it. So yes, now we have them, and they are out there. They're being very diligent. But yes, there are several up there. We have had countless of our constituents coming in here telling us about how they are six fifty-five, they are literally getting six o'clock, they're getting tickets when they're not even supposed to be on duty. So we have to, if we could be mindful of the timestamp of when they are getting, when these tickets are being given, that might help as well. And maybe identify maybe some of our employees who are just being a little overzealous in their job. We want them to be on point, but there is a, as Council President said, when you're doing things, you're bragging about it, that's, that's not right. You're not doing your job. You're trying to just, that's a power thing for me. It's a power move. And we don't want that. We want, and we want folks to come, as Mr. Hamlet has alluded to, we want them to be here. We don't want folks to say they don't want to come to Trenton. Our downtown area, we're trying to build it back up. We want folks to want to be there. But I know that if I got a ticket after going out and having a good night in a space that I didn't see anything for, that would not encourage me to come back. And we want folks to be encouraged to come back to our city. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Okay, so I'm just go through this, and this will serve as, I guess, my civic comment then, right? Okay. The, because we're in civic comment now, right? Okay, so to the point about parking, yesterday, the mayor and I had a public discussion on Facebook Live about the parking and, and all of the discrepancies and things that happened. Mr. Hallett, I did see your post as well as other people's posts and comments and everything. And so we got into it and we talked about it. The mayor stated at that time that it is at the discretion of the council that we can actually, we can look into it and say that if we want to designate something as it pertains to downtown without there being a charge for parking, we can do that. We can look to see about if there's certain hours of time, we could do that as well. I did bring up the point about the signage and everything, that he's supposed to be going to see what's going on. He was not aware about the, the kiosk that did not work because someone had brought it to my attention about the one out in front of the lobby club. We talked about the fact of the ones that were not on the street because of the construction and stuff. But then in also speaking to a parking enforcement officer, I was like, well, how is anybody giving out tickets? And there's no kiosk. And they said, well, if you have a parking enforcement officer that is timing or riding by based on the sign, so Director Harris, to your point about if it's two-hour parking or whatever's happening, if they're timing when they go by, then they would still issue a ticket based upon what the sign said, even though there is no kiosk that is there. So we do need to look into it. I agree that something needs to be done. Also, in the discussion, we talked about overall planning of the city and how when things were done at one point in time, X amount of areas were given this amount of spaces to park because they said this, in this section, people would have cars, and these people would catch buses, and these people could walk and ride bikes and all that good stuff. Well, the dynamics of our city have changed greatly that we discussed the possibility also of having a look, a study, to look throughout, to see about the signage and what needs to be updated and what needs to be changed. So to your point about the street sweepers and all of that kind of stuff. So counsel, we just have to do our due diligence to just come together and then just really look to work with the administration and then see what legislation we can put down to better suit what's happening around us in the city. Thank you, Council President.
Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison.
One quick question.
Sure.
Regarding the parking enforcers, are they able or allowed, I say, I don't know if they're able or allowed, who wear body cameras?
So our plan is, because there's been complaints, and we recognize that, and there's been customers who say, listen, I wasn't parked in that spot. And then they go to the judge who has the final say. So we are going to, for twenty, for calendar year twenty-five, we will be buying body cameras. And that does two things. It lets me know that folks are where they should be, okay, and that customer service is being, you know, it's taken seriously. But also, it protects the customer and the parking officer, because now when you go to the judge and you say, wait a minute, I wasn't parked there, I wasn't legal, and everybody tends to say that they were never in the wrong spot. We can pull that feed up and say, wait, you were, you were not. For example, we had a resident do some damage to a vehicle recently. So what we need, what we're hoping is to avoid that kind of threats is that they'll be turned off by the body camera. You know, you know, you'll say, wait a minute, I'm gonna take a step back, because they'll identify themselves and say, listen, you are being taken, right? You'll see that. And then we can make improvements from there. But as I said earlier, we support a hundred percent any modifications that need to be done that improve the experience of Trentonians. The goal is not to make money here. The goal, all we're doing is enforcing the law as you have it. Once you change it, we'll change. Simple.
Okay.
Councilman Harrison, did you want to go on to your civic comment?
What's, oh.
I'm still going to allow at least, at least two minutes, three minutes, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll be quick. I'll try to be quick. Let's see, um, let's see. I Rise, Trenton Office has a grand opening Thursday, January sixteenth, ten A M. to two P M. West Presbyterian Church, eleven forty Greenwood Avenue, featuring Health Resource Fair, Global Grace Health Van, Bank Service, Social Service, Employment Fair. Like I said, this is another wonderful event. Also like to thank interim director Paul Harris. They had Jefferson Vincent Playground over in Monmouth and Locust, the wonderful, the events for the kids. It's more what we need in the community. Also, today, there is a code blue in the city. It's from January the seventh through January the ninth. Temperatures are going to go below thirty degrees. You can go to a warming shelter at the Sam Naples Center, six eleven Chestnut Avenue, between four P M. and, yeah, three, four P M. and nine P M. City will also provide transportation, six oh nine, nine eight nine, thirty-four, sixty-four. Also like to thank Ms. Ruth Carter, because she's always doing a wonderful job for this great city, this community. And I think that's about it, everybody. Oh, Happy New Year's, everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, man. Thank you, Councilman Harrison. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So I wanted to first congratulate newly elected President, Councilwoman Gonzalez, and our council vice president, Councilwoman Edwards, on not only becoming president and vice president, but also for both of them making history as first Latina and Native American. So congratulations to both of you on that, that great achievement. So next, I wanted to congratulate, I believe, Arch, he has gone, but I wanted to congratulate him also on his newly, newly being appointed now as from interim to actual director. I wanted to say thank you for the resolution for Vanessa Sullivan. It has been a long haul, and I'm glad to see that that is going to finally be finished in February. I did want to also, I know that Councilwoman Williams already made comment about it, but Ken Bullock, his services were on yesterday. And as I gave, then I wanted to send my condolences to him and his family and to all of those who have lost loved ones in the new year. I did want to, I want to be remiss in not saying Happy New Year to everyone that is here. Wishing you well. I'm looking forward to a great year, working with each and every one of you, especially our directors. Always, Mr. Dan, always good to see you here. And I'm looking forward to this, us getting up some type of resolve with the parking. This has been something that has been, that's not new, but you know, since we have gotten up to speed with trying to get parking enforced, now we have gotten to the other side of it. It's being overly enforced. So we've got to get the balance in there. So thank you, Director Harris, for working with us. We know that we're going to get it. It might take us a minute, but we will absolutely get there. And to those who know of an elderly person, if you know of someone who is homeless, if you know of someone who may not have a heater, it, just like my council, Councilman Harrison said, my counterpart, it is a cold blue. It is extremely cold. I believe tonight is supposed to go down to nineteen degrees, with the wind chill factor supposedly making it feel like seven. If you can get someone to direct them to one of the warming shelters, please do so. If you can, call on, I did it on last night, and I'll do it again on tonight, calling my seniors in the community just to check on them, see how they're doing. You never know who needs a cup of soup, who doesn't have a blanket, whose heat is not on. Oil cannot get through, they don't have the money to pay oil. If you can get them a blanket, you never know. Or call someone who you think might be able to help. And I think that is about it. Oh, my West Ward Community Conversations will be on next Tuesday, February, I believe it's the fourteenth. They will be at the old, the West Ward Trenton Police Station at five-thirty on Artisan. Please come out, please join us for a great conversation. There's always, always great information that is suspense there, being, being given from the directors or coming in from our residents. Please come out. We're going to have our water department is going to direct, is going to report out, and we're going to have Mr. Jim Beat. He will be coming out as well. I'm excited about that. And we're going to get our recreation department back out there again. We want to just have it rotating. So we have a little bit of everyone. So yes, Diego, you'll be next, Director. We're just looking to have the conversations to continue and continue and keep our community updated. February, that's the fourteen, February fourteenth, Tuesday? I'm sorry, Jan, I'm on February. Thank you. January, January, I'm moving it, I'm sorry. January fourteenth at five-thirty. Please come out. And with that, I'm actually going to end a couple of seconds early. I'm going to read a portion of our mission statement, which recognizes that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. Thank you. Enjoy your evening. Get in and stay warm.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everybody. Two things I wanted to address tonight. One, sanitation department. I really want to thank the sanitation department for all of your hard work. You guys really Um, you guys really did pull through and I know there were a lot of complaints by a lot of people on social media throughout the holiday schedule. Um, I want to give kudos to, um, Assistant Director Hector Way. You were out there yourself on the truck, you were actually, um, moving and picking up trash, um, and being very responsive. I know that there were so many delays, you know, for the South Ward, you know, we had to wait for the West Ward to get finished, for the South Ward to start and so on and so forth, and it's not easy. Um, I do hope that moving into the holiday seasons, we get a little more, uh, better acclimated, a little, um, more organized. I know that you guys were, um, slighted with a lot of callouts and people, you know, not, not showing up to work. Um, there were inspectors out there working, working the trucks. So I just really want to say kudos to the sanitation department. I do hope that things can move smoother moving forward. Um, but you know, to those that were complaining, you know, this is not an easy job, you know, the city has to get done. There are holidays and while we're preparing for our holidays at home, you guys were out there working. So just, I just wanted to applaud sanitation department for that and hope that we could get some of these kinks out in the future moving forward. Um, the other thing that I wanted to address, um, there were things put out on social media with regards to this donation to the animal shelter that we have addressed, um, from an individual who owns a quote unquote, I guess, illegal cannabis business. And, and my name was put out as being part of or having knowledge of this donation upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, um, for that donation. I had knowledge only of a donation that was, um, made prior to that, that was orchestrated between this individual and shelter staff on June first, twenty twenty-four, that was for a refrigerator, a microwave, a washer and a dryer. None of that accumulating to anywhere close to upwards of a hundred thousand dollars I was not made aware of, had no awareness of any donation that was made subsequent to, by this individual, how it was organized, how it was put into place. I wanted to put that out there. Um, and additionally, it was also brought up that this same individual who made donations to South Village on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, um, that I was made aware of. On, on or around that day, South Village, which is elderly, um, living and disabled, um, were without an elevator in one part of the building that has five floors. Those elders and disables were unable to get out of the building. They were unable to go to the grocery store for a number of four to five days. I had put something on social media requesting anybody to assist, um, to give donations, um, for that. This same individual who donated to the animal shelter was one of many individuals who responded to that post, came through and, and donated, um, water, food, non-perishables, perishables, so on and so forth. Um, the social worker of, um, South Village was, was made aware, um, and assisted as well as, um, individuals in the office. Um, it was told to me that, that there's apparently an issue with this person's background, um, uh, maybe a criminal background or something. Those things I'm not aware of. If somebody shows up to give donations in the community, in the city of Trenton, if I'm asking for something in need, I do not ask you, what is your background? I'm not asking you, what is your criminal background? I don't care. You know, we're here to give back to the community, we're here to assist the community. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, um, it is not something that we should be doing. And those who complained about who was giving donations should have stepped up and donated themselves. So I just wanted to put that out there. Um, I have nothing further. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and have a wonderful, wonderful evening, stay warm and get home safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kattonberg, um, Figueroa Kattonberg, Councilwoman Edwards, Councilwoman, Council Vice President Edwards.
Thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, Happy New Year. I just want to say, um, congratulations again to Council, uh, President Gonzalez. And, um, you did very well in your very first meeting. And, um, I just want to say congratulations to Director Arch Liston. Um, he is a, a wealth of knowledge when it comes to economic development in, uh, in municipal government. And I look forward to continuing to work with him, uh, with the Economic Development Subcommittee with, uh, Councilwomen Feliciano and Williams. Uh, I would love for us to establish monthly meetings like I spoke about earlier and tackle some of these, uh, abandoned and dilapidated properties and, um, shopping centers and things and strip malls that we have throughout the city to try to facilitate moving those along a little quicker. I want to say, uh, my condolences to the Bullock family. His daughter Kenny is a dear friend of mine, my heart aches for her. And, um, the Bullock family is, is definitely one of the pillars of the community. So I just keep them in my prayers. About the two fiftieth plan, our two fiftieth anniversary is coming up very quickly next year. And, um, I would love to work with the administration on what the plans are around that. But in, in speaking to that regard, the parking downtown. Um, as we are planning this two fiftieth, it's important that we promote a lot of the businesses that are in the city, but it, this plan will not be as impactful or effective if we continue to have parking issues downtown. So I definitely would like for us to come up with some type of remedies for that as quickly as possible. Um, parking enforcement is a necessary aspect of maintaining order and generating revenue, but it must be balanced with fairness and accessibility. So I think that, you know, due to, you know, this is a multifaceted issue. It stems from, uh, a lot of years of lax enforcement that created a culture where, um, a lot of people just were used to being able to park anywhere without paying. So, um, as we are focusing on bringing in revenue so that we can provide more services and things like that throughout the city, improving our parks, improving our infrastructure, bringing in revenue was important in parking is one of those things. So with, but that also comes with educating people. So I think that as we were talking about enforcing the parking to, you know, get a sense of order and, um, and organization throughout the city, uh, we missed the point of doing a press release or doing some type of public outreach so people knew, you know, what times you can park in which areas, which areas there is no parking at and things like that. And, um, and how much as well. So the parking garages are free on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, during the week, they do cost and also the kiosk cost. But I think, you know, putting it out there, how much these things are, what kind of ease, you know, people's feelings about having to pay for it. Um, it, it, we have a very, like I said, it's, it was a culture shock. A lot of people don't believe that, oh, it's just Trenton, I'm not paying for parking. Oh, there's nothing downtown, I'm not paying for parking. But we have rules for a reason, um, they exist for a reason. So I think doing a little public education and outreach. And then also like, um, uh, Director Harris said, um, council looking at some of these rules and changing them. There's a lot of no parking zones downtown and in my opinion, do not make sense. And so I think that we need to allow parking, es- especially like on South Broad going up that hill. Once you get past Mill Hill Park, between Mill Hill Park and that Dunkin' Donuts, that whole entire left lane where Turning Point Church is, that makes no sense for there to be no parking right there. And then also on, on Lafayette, uh, on, on the side of the hotel and garage. I know there's a bike lane there, but I think it's more important for us to have parking there and, and instead of a bike lane and maybe we can figure that out. Um, uh, if it takes a traffic study or some type of study, I know people love studies, but I think just using a little common sense here and realizing that bike traffic is really not that heavy and we need to increase parking, um, abilities and that will help our businesses. Because a, a lot of our businesses have closed down, they have left the city and we're trying to attract new businesses. We have this two fiftieth coming up and we have a dead downtown and we have to focus on that. Those are my comments for the evening. Thank you so much and have a good night.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Um, so I'll be quick, I was hoping we got out of here by eight, so we're right on time. Um, prayers to the Bullock family and the Tibbs family who both lost, um, two gems in our city. I also want to thank the city workers, I know was mentioned earlier, sanitation department and also the recreation department, because I know some of the recreation department also helped out with picking up trash. And I didn't know Mr. Hector was one of the ones, so, so thank you for that, for being hands-on and showing people like he's your, delegate you also are a hands-on type of person, so thank you for that. Um, I am looking forward to sitting down and possibly looking at the, um, the parking enforcement and, and rezoning and doing whatever we need to do to get the parking issues resolved. Um, and then also just a, a quick announcement, uh, Clara's Heart will be hosting its annual winter giveaway this Saturday and that is at ten A M. at the Rescue Mission. If anyone would like to come out, um, we will be giving away hats, gloves, scarves and things to those in need. Um, also you, this is the month to register your animals, so if you have not registered your animals, please do so at the vital statistics department, um, for the month of January. And I believe that says, oh, and I just want to say shout out to the Trenton High Ba- Basketball Girls and Boys, they both won this evening. So I just want to say congratulations to them and thank you all for being present, Happy New Year and thank you.
Madam President, if there's no other civic comment, you have no other comments, you can ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yes, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman, uh, Vice President Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, whoops, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? All right, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes. And yes, we did take a vote in the consent agenda, meeting adjourned. Thank you.